...will now have in compliance with the Federal Innovation Act, notice this being leaked by fact. As the Department of Health and General, posted on the board, lobby town hall and on town's website. Now have any questions?
Dear heaven and Father, I thank you for this day you blessed us with, and thank you for this group of people that's gathered here to try to improve our own community. And have the best interest at heart for our time, please bless us with the wisdom to make the decisions that will be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Have I pledged allegiance?
My allegiance is to God, United States of America. To your covenant for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice and crime.
At this time, Laos Construction is going to give a quick presentation on what's all gonna be done at the town hall. There was additional monies that were left over, and so I'm gonna go ahead and put together some additional projects. And so they're gonna present that to you now, as well as color schemes as it relates to the flooring that will be updated. So I'll go ahead and let them know if you're gonna do yourselves a part of what's coming.
Okay, so my name's Randall Ellison, I'm managing our Spartanburg office. Lisa P. Hall, who is the project manager over at the Town Hall Innovation, she is outside of Aruba somewhere right now, so I'm filling in for her. Her and Patrick have gathered together, and this is some additional updates outside of our current contract, I think we can present. I'm just gonna roll through them, and if y'all have any questions, feel free to stop me. The first one is the restrooms redoing the vinyl that is in there now. I think it looks like tile, but it's actually about, it is mixed floorboard. And so these are the color schemes, but it's gonna actually be the best pattern that's in there right now. And then we have this other vinyl thing that I'm doing on the platform, the vestibular. So if you have any questions about that.
We're changing the vestment.
We were proposing that to lay this down over on top of this with...
Why would we wanna cover up the tile?
That was something that...
It's, I believe it's, is it vinyl up there?
Yeah, it's vinyl right now.
That's vinyl.
Yeah, we brought, we brought some floor contractors here, and they're...
I think it's prettier than that.
And it, it'll be, what's here will, will be up there as well, so...
Yeah, it'll be on the top as well. Number two, we're removing toilet partitions in the restrooms. And so that is just patching the tile, the wall tile and drywall, as we remove partitions and accessories. Number three, I understand there's a unit somewhere that's been installed...
It's the phase, the ten, ten, no, no.
Ten ton.
It's a ten ton unit. Three-phase unit that's outside that was down for the basement that was never hooked up.
It's never been wired in. So number three is basically wiring an outside unit, installing gear and disconnects, and demoing existing panel to make redo, to get it running. Number four is troubleshooting existing outlets, I understand that some of these outlets don't work. So it's testing, rewiring, reconfiguring, to make sure all of them work. Number five is type, it's not actually as awesome as I said, silly, silly painted right here. It's to test and reconnect and get them all working. Number six is complete interior paint throughout the building. I think there's some imperfections back in the back, and just updating all the painting throughout. Number seven is the artisan list of track here, replicating them on all these mixture or those that are over there.
And our goal for this is to keep this, the way it is now, just slightly updated, just, no, we don't want to do anything major here, just a little touch and go, just that is the town hall.
But that's just, sorry, questions on the...
So when I came and presented this to you last time, the cost that came in for Laos was drastically under the amount of money that was given to the town by the earmark from the state. And so that amount that's, that was, that was, that was left over, I guess. I had them look at additional projects that we've been looking at, and I know, we have meetings here, it'd be great to have blinds that actually close this thing up here. And we have looked at some additional projects to kind of do some potential upgrades.
This is the vinyl of those. Any questions on any of that?
And we'll leave the sample here.
Yeah, so y'all can... We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can come say hello. No, it was just a presentation to let y'all know this was the direction that we're going with this. If you're okay with us moving forward with this, then we'll go ahead and proceed, and they'll go ahead and begin, I believe next week is gonna start doing some of the work.
Okay.
Next thing I want to do that is do a proclamation for Gerald Fred Teaster. Some of his family is here, this is something that came out of the history committee, and wanted to honor him for all his work and service for the town of Paklet. The mayor has a proclamation, and also that there's a representative of the family who would like to come up and say a few words about Mr. Teaster as well. Maybe we should have them come up first?
Yeah, yeah.
You wanna go ahead and come up?
He just wrote a brief statement since he couldn't be here tonight. He said, "I'm sorry that I cannot be here in person to receive no more. My sisters, B. P. and K. have kindly agreed to accept it for me. I would like to deeply thank the town of Paklet for giving me this award. It was totally unexpected, and I appreciate it so much. I'm pleased to know that it has made a contribution to the people of Paklet. Actually, the website really is a love letter to the community and the people where I grew up. I tried to explain why I started the website when it began about eighteen years ago. As I got older, I came to realize how unique and special Paklet and the surrounding area had been when I was a child. At the same time, I realized, excuse me, that a great number of the places and people that I remember existed only in my memory. A lot of the mills, buildings and structures, except the houses that men took in them. It occurred to me that if people my age did not write it down, then the story of this rich land of wonderful people, places and towns would be lost forever to today's children and those to come in the future." "The memories on the website are not a critical analysis of conditions of the times. They are the recollections of a small boy that at the time believed that he lived in a southern version of the market leading. I will cherish this award forever. Thank you again."
Proclamation to honor and appreciate the work and service of Gerald Fred Teaster. Where Gerald Fred Teaster was born on March twenty fifth, nineteen thirty-seven, and raised in Paklet, where he was a nineteen fifty-five graduate of Paklet High School. And whereas Gerald Teaster attended Walton College, and later graduated from University of South Carolina with a Bachelor of Science degree in mechanical engineering, and is currently a retired licensed professional engineer, and whereas Gerald Teaster worked at the United States Department of Defense at Robbins Air Force Base in Georgia, Redstone Arsenal in Huntsville, Alabama, and Charleston Naval Shipyard in various engineering projects, and on missiles, submarine, submarine destroyer tenders around the world. And whereas Gerald Teaster started the publishing company Junior History Press as a means to produce local histories, books and material for younger readers. Where he wrote and published children's books, including the Confederate submarine H. L. Hunnely, and Confederate steam torpedo boat S. C. S. David, Confederate courageous... The story of the Confederate submarine H. H. Hunnely and the spirit of, and the spirit of the people, four days to goblins. And where Gerald Teaster married Mary Lee McKenney, and were married for almost sixty-seven years when she passed in, on, in February of twenty twenty-three. But not before, they had four children, Claudia Lee, Raymond Lewis, James Fred and Laura Marie, five children and five grandchildren, eleven great-grandchildren. Whereas Gerald Teaster started the archival website, Paklet Memories, in approximately twenty oh-six, where he, where he cataloged and researched various aspects of Paklet's history, and whereas Gerald Teaster's website has been a reportory of history and research of many current and former residents of the town of Paklet. Where Gerald Teaster's website has been such a positive impact on those in the Paklet community for sharing his knowledge, research, pictures, memories and information. Now therefore be resolved that the town, the town council of Paklet hereby proclaim our thankfulness and appreciation for Gerald Fred Teaster for all the work and time spent creating and maintaining the website, for all those who will be continuing to enjoy it."
Hey, man. Let's go inside.
Yeah.
You can go ahead and pass it around. If you wanna put the date on, put the date on there, and then the council meeting's...
You have any comments? Approval of minutes may due twenty twenty-four?
Motion to approve minutes may second, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Post the lady's second to approve the minutes of the mayor's second, twenty twenty-four, if you present any objection. Call the favor, call the vote. Okay. Lock your records. Your board, sorry.
So you're right, but we didn't go ahead and approve those additions, the second two thousand four hundred and forty dollars additional upgrades to the town that were presented by the Laos Construction.
May, may. Hold on. We, we get to sign it, you wouldn't give it to you? Sorry.
I'm just...
Say that again?
So what those are is, there was original, a map that was already approved for Laos Construction to work. There was additional monies to be used for this project. And with Paul and I, we've kind of looked at some additional upgrades based on things that need to be done up here in town hall. And so that's where that list ends up coming from. But for us to be able to move forward with that, and for them to go ahead and start, there'll need to be approval of those additional costs of the vote.
And then the funds is already there?
The funds are already there, it was a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and even with this additional amount, it turns out to be a total of...
About two forty-two.
Two forty-two.
You got that, Paul?
And the, the two fifties earmarked for town hall, so it's about to be some town hall construction.
Correct, everything has to be, the total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, everything has to be used in town hall, the way that the ground was stipulated.
If we, if we approve this now, can we tweak any of this later, or is it kind of set in stone?
If, what would you want to change?
Well, I'm not sure yet, I'm just hearing about it, these items, but, you know, we've got Ms. Exton, I was concerned about the flooring. If we go ahead and approve, approve the funds, obviously there'd be some, some, maybe some changes, but we've got eight grants room to play.
Correct.
So we can maybe talk about some of those minor details later.
And if there's something on there, if y'all wanna go ahead and approve some, but not all this stuff right now, you'll think about it more, and keep in mind, I mean, the sooner y'all can go ahead and approve this, the sooner they can go ahead and start. You do have another council meeting in, later this month, if you want to look at it. Initially, when they came through, we were initially just looking at colors and stuff in there. We did ask them to go ahead and look at some of the additional things, upgrades as well.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the use of the seventy-two thousand four forty, with the understanding that, you know, we can revisit some details.
Is it possible to allocate the release, the total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars since it's earmarked for this building? Is it possible to go ahead and say that that money can be used, this costs sixty-two fifty? Because the eight thousand is gonna be paid from that, and we can say it's going to this building, let's release the full two fifty.
Yeah, if you get some...
Projects, we can, but we can say now that the full two fifty goes to the building for whatever projects we determine, right?
So the, the way we're set up is the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars entirely supposed to be used on the town hall?
Right, but instead of just going to two forty-two, let's just see two fifty and be done with it.
It would just be that, would, are y'all okay with, the, the only thing is I want to bring those projects for y'all to look at, rather than other eight thousand dollars. That's why you're going ahead and approving the seventy-two, and then the next council meeting, if you can come up with something else for the other eight thousand dollars, we'll get that as well.
What you say, the one we need to go ahead and add the eight thousand dollars to the...
The full two eighty.
For, for later improvements to be determined.
So, okay. Y'all about that?
And then we can determine what those projects are.
So we can write that into the change order as a contingency or an allowance, a general, these are allowances?
These are just potential numbers, this isn't actions, right?
Yeah, these are actions.
So, so when you, when you dig into something and you find that it's burnt, and you have to replace for the what you expected, what I'm saying is there's probably gonna need to have some contingent money in there, right?
Yeah, so I think that, yeah, the remaining funds could be carried off in to, or quick approval.
Right, that's, that's why I was saying, let's just release the full two fifty towards the building, go from there.
Do you want to...
Do we need to exempt the agenda to include this?
Yes, go ahead, if, if you, if someone wants to amend the agenda to add this.
I'll make a motion, we amend the agenda.
Or you have one motion?
We're about to, yeah.
Okay.
You're, 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 you're sending it in the motion, yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add the additional construction elements.
Okay, in a second.
I second the motion to add the...
To the...
Fun.
To the...
Building fun, to the agenda.
Okay, all right. Any questions, on the favor? Okay, all right, and we need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we release the remainder of the, of our total two fifty allocated to town hall concern.
The total two fifty. Okay, second, motion, maybe second. Anybody, any questions? On the favor? On the vote, okay.
But just to say that it's still, we want to do some tweaking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're maybe extending the progress. One of the things while we're talking about it, did anybody ever take a look at the, the waters, water lines?
That's one thing that's gonna be done, we did talk about that as we're going through, is making sure that all, because as of right now, you flush that toilet, you gotta wait fifteen to twenty minutes before it goes down.
Right, yeah.
And so that is part of the original contract.
Okay, all right. I just, all the white rust and stuff, you know.
I believe the way it said, it's a little flush valve there too, all the plumbing. Any other questions about that? Probably move on to demonstrators or work. I'm only gonna hit on some things that I for want to kind of talk to you a little bit about.
Wait, wait, one second. Is there anything on this list that we all agree on, so that maybe Laos can be started? Won't you guys just start relatively soon?
Yeah, and all, I mean, everything's readily available, we can provide the schedule with these line item as well, so we'll set expectations for decisions, if that, if that would help.
I think having a general approval, we can just send you to, like, drop that base on each of the line items for when decisions need to be made.
Yeah, my, my concern is, from what I understand, we haven't actually said any of these are good together. I think the, the way it was left is that there was questions, and maybe there was tweaking that wanted to be done, so we're, we're not doing any of this?
No, the, what you have right there, the seventy-two thousand, they've already, that is their cost, that's their estimates, they've put them together.
I'm saying as far as approval from councils, they do all these things.
That's what I was asking for before, was approved from councilway before that.
That's what I'm asking, is there anything on here that we can all agree to go ahead and do, they can move on? Or are we just gonna wait until next meeting?
I thought that's what y'all were doing when you released the entire map.
Well, one question is item one, you know, whether we can talk about that. But also, I mean, is interior painting, the color scheme staying identical, or just freshening it?
What's that?
Like, the only other question would be interior painting, keeping the palette the same?
Yeah, believe everything is, we're gonna go with a...
Gray.
A gray, that was the only thing, it was gonna be a neutral gray. But remember when we had HVAC work that was done in the back, and they had to put tarp's up inside the lobby and things there? They had taken off some of the paint that was up there, now have fixed that, but the town has been painted, town hall has been painted in.
Let me, let me, let me get, uh, my information right out here. All right, what we just did was, we approved this, didn't we?
We, we only really approved to spend all of the two fifty on the building.
But that is what the grant did when we...
I agree, I agree, but to release the rest of it for the projects. Like, what I was understanding is that there was concerns on whether we really wanted all of these items done, or are we going to tweak them? That's what was said. I just wanna make sure that they know, that they're gonna go, and you know that they can start doing this project. I'm moving, but I think...
I would like to see different options for item one, and see if that eight grants, basically what we've done now is given them a blank check for eight grand to kind of spend the themes. But I agree with Ms. Exton that the flooring could potentially be...
So that cost is approved with light materials, so if y'all did light samples for this light item a light ago, the light, you would view more samples, the cost should change.
What I'm suggesting to y'all is that if you go ahead and approve seventy-two thousand four hundred and forty, and then when there's something else that comes up, based on what they're doing, that costs eight thousand dollars, and we can, I'll bring that too.
Right, I would like to consider real hardwoods and real tile, that's what I'm saying. And if we can do that for the eight grand, then I think everyone would be happy with that.
I, my, my concern is, is if we go with real, real hardwoods, it would be a higher elevation than the carpet over here?
You know, they talk about tile up there.
Yeah, I would prefer tile there, but, you know, it's...
Yeah, I, I think Lionel coming in there, I really, I mean, I know she's trying to, just to tie it in with up here, but I, to, I, I like that. I, I don't know why you would want to remove that, there's nothing wrong with that.
She was just saying that just to keep, because that's gonna be this, that color, that just, instead of having two different colors in place.
I, I, I don't see how it's gonna... I mean, I mean, that's gonna be wood anyway, that's gonna be wood and...
Why don't we just approve two through seven?
Yeah.
Why don't we just approve two through seven, and then ask for additional, a, a new proposal with maybe hardwoods up here and tile here?
So we can, uh, we'll come up with that alternate, so if y'all wanna approve two through seven, we'll come up with that alternate, and the kicker will be, based on starting next week, we'll just assign a deadline to when that decision needs to be made, if that's okay with everybody who are like, if the decision was not made by, if one's gonna back, we're trying to live by this date, then we're either on a day-to-day schedule delay.
I mean, it's a, it's a two-month project, so, I mean, thirty days from now, thirty, forty-five days from now would be, uh, the decision when it needs to be made.
That floor covering says it'll be one of the last things you'll ever say.
Yeah.
So, three weeks, we have another meeting, we'll have, we'll have an answer to it by three weeks.
We'll be sitting on June twenty-seventh.
Perfect, so, so we'll consider, we'll give y'all a, an alternate, another alternate, we'll call it one A, essentially, uh, based on hardwoods, including LBT, right, and tile there for considerations on the June twenty-third, and then twenty-seventh, and then the rest of these would be marked as approved.
And what time do you have to be on the twenty-seventh again?
I'll make a motion to approve the funds for us, items two through seven on this point.
Also. Motion, maybe the second, uh, two through seven, any questions? Please, we'll come. On the favor? On the vote. Okay. All right.
Okay, uh, check out number one on there, we've already posted it on, on Facebook. Uh, the big thing I'm gonna skip down to is number eight. Uh, the town of Paklet will be featured on upcoming episode of WSBA News, Seven Zip Trips on Friday, June fourteenth, five AM to nine AM. Uh, we can set up two locations that'd be about a block from each other, with certain interviews of local businesses, varied people. If you are available this morning, please let me know so that we can plan accordingly. Any ideas are most helpful for this, as we showcase Paklet to the upstate. If you have any prompts that you can bring out, great. Uh, if you get a chance, Google WSBA Zip Trips, uh, they just recently did one in Melton last weekend, they've done one in, they've been a part of the upstate. It's a big deal for the town. Interviews that we already have set up is an interview with the chief, an interview with Chief Brown. Uh, then also, some of the other current features we have is, uh, they'll be doing a, an interview with Camden IGA, Calis Modo, the librarian, Ben Baines, Phil Steakhouse, Vintage View Adventures, um, Brian Humphrey's been helping us out with events, so he's gonna be talking about our movies in the park, and our farmer's market, as well as some other stuff, uh, other events that are coming up. And then we're also working on, Paul is not gonna be here that day, uh, and so what we're trying to schedule is for Paul to do a remote, or do an advanced, um, interview to kind of talk about his plans for the claw frame and things coming up for him. But this will be a big deal, um, if y'all can come out for that, um, but, uh, we've already got a few things kind of set up so far. But we're just kind of trying to showcase Paklet as a cool place to be, and fun things to do, um, and come and check out, and...
It's the fourteenth and what time now?
It's the fourteenth from five AM to nine AM. And what they're doing is, is that there'll be an interview at five, five-thirty, six, six-thirty, seven, seven-thirty, eight, eight-thirty. Uh, then there's also some additional segments that are gonna be thrown in there as well. Uh, four other of the anchors for WSBA that morning will be out here, um, so, uh, bring the motorcycle down, come hang out. Uh, anything that y'all wanna do, or having Phil's come out, actually bring some stamps that he's actually made, uh, and showcase what he's got, 'cause he's kind of a big staple here. Uh, IGA, Kim will showcase some of the stuff that she sells there, and just kinda talk about the community. So this is, this is gonna be a really cool thing for our town. But if y'all have any other ideas that we can do, please let me know. Uh, would have loved to have done it during school year, if we would have had the students come out there, use any type of presentation. But if you have any questions, better let me know.
I'm making you the cheerleader if they come, if you would like.
That would be great, if you can. If you can just send me an email like that, we'll, we'll get that taken care of.
Where that will be set up at?
We're gonna do that in the flats, um, down here. We wanna try to get the river as a background on there.
It'd be cool if you could get somebody paddling up and coming out to kayak.
We're gonna have some kayaks out there from Vintage View, 'cause I wanna showcase, get on the package, the kayak, to come hang out here. Um, so we're gonna try to do as much, as much as we can in terms of incorporating the river. Would you like to paddle up on a kayak? We'll leave all the chairs out. The truck traffic signs that y'all had requested before, we had a hard time getting them, because, um, most of them wanted them fifty or a hundred quantities, and we finally found a company that does smaller quantities. So those have been ordered, the temporary signs that are out there in ample truck traffic are just so that trucks know what's coming up. Uh, hope those have, they've ordered, and will be coming up. Uh, I wanted to remind you of the Municipal Association of South Carolina Annual Meeting, July seventeenth to twenty-first, in Grateful, South Carolina. Most of you probably have already got the information about registration. The way registration's gonna be done is they have one person per community for a select amount of time during the next few weeks to log in and set it up. And so Jennifer Gilbert, our Assistant Town Clerk, is gonna do that. I need to know by, uh, the seventeenth of June, if you plan to attend, if you want hotel rooms, I need to know that. I'm planning on going, I'd love to go, um, and just commute down there. Uh, but please let me know, it's great that it's in here, really. That's all I have.
You got any update on Pat's property, up there on Green Street?
No, I mean, what we have done, I mean, unfortunately, until I know exactly where those, you know, mice are actually coming from.
Right.
That's the only thing, I mean, I don't like the idea of people asking somebody and not knowing that that's the property that was actually caused on the top.
Right. As far as the tall grass and stuff like that?
Now, with the tall grass, we do go after one of them. We do send out letters, uh, we do have that individual's phone number, uh, so we will, um, send them a letter, make sure that it's taken care of.
If you already don't know.
Um, I believe, if we have it, we will make sure that's done immediately. I'll check and see if that's on the list, and I can email you as soon as I know.
Are they, are they?
Yeah, it was the last one.
Are they, uh? Is that, uh, is that owner out, uh, out of town, or did he?
The owner was in Boylan Springs, I believe he bought it during a tax sale. Um, but, you know, he, he, he knows that we're on him, and so he said he's got his schedule of when it's supposed to be cut. But sometimes we have to remind him. We also have the problem that the house next door to him, um, has been piling up, um, thirty, forty bags of trash on the side of their house. Um, and that is causing another problem. So the other sites, if you're looking at the vacant lot, on the right-hand side, if you drive up the alleyway, you'll see about twenty to thirty bags of just trash that are just sitting up against the house.
Have we not taken into account?
Code enforcement has been by there.
We have, we have taken them, they're going to court.
Can we, uh, what I would like is a very substantial paper trouble. So repeated letters to this property order, to both property orders, repeated letters, to show that we are still having issues, and the, and the neighbors having issues, constant, you know, pressure.
So, what happens with that particular house that's on the right, they received a letter, uh, they've just recently got a, a ticket, um, full disclosure, I talked to our, um, our police officer, who actually gave them the ticket, and when he turned around, he heard that probably not been thrown on the ground. So they'll be going to court, and if they don't go to court, they will be arrested.
So how long is their court date? Do we know that?
Court dates are typically cut about sixty days from the time that they issue them.
Sixty?
And, I mean, can, can, do we not have the landscape guys that can just go over there?
I've got other projects that the landscape guys should be working on, and are still behind on some other stuff right now. 'Cause I've had some other requests from other people.
It's been two years for them.
Now, the one with the, the, the property that's, the vacant property out there, we, I'm almost possibly sending a letter out there, but I'll make sure of that. Uh, he has fifteen days to comply, if he doesn't comply, then he gets a ticket. Uh, the last time this happened, uh, we came all the way down to the wire, and we're going to send somebody out there to cut it, and then, um, he called the day before he was council meeting, and said, "I will take care of it." But it's right back, I mean, it's, it's, it's summertime. It, it went away for a while, 'cause it was during the winter time, and it was, nothing was growing, but now it's summer again, in some sort of in the background.
Have, has, has there been a, a letter from town hall to Pat?
I have not sent a letter, but she calls often, we talk to her.
Right.
But I can send her.
Please just mail a letter, say, saying, something in, in writing, saying what we're trying to do, what we have done, or what we're, we'll do in the future. Just something to, to hand to her lawyer.
Those typically come from the mayor, would you like me to send that to you before I get out?
I can do it, yeah.
No, I, I typically write them, but I don't hear any more.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking, I think anybody that comes and speaks at the podium deserves a letter. Thank you for showing up, and we will address your concerns.
I'll get that set up.
Yeah, I think Well, I think with the tickets and things like that, the code enforcement, I think they're at least attempting to do something, and I think that's a little bit of progress, which is going in the right direction.
The, the problem that we discussed before is, is I don't know where those mouse, mice that are in our house are coming from. She says that they come from that property, I would hate to ticket somebody, just because someone thinks that they're from that property. There are a lot of other people that- Now, the, the, yes, the tall grass, we are, are going after, and then the, the garbage they have, they're coming up on court day, very soon.
Code enforcement is therefore being
That's right.
Any other questions on, um, code enforcement, building permits?
Assume the mic is hot.
You've probably already seen the, with the construction, they're going up on Hart Street, uh, there's another project that's happening on Sunset, um, that's recently going up, and there's a lot more act, more action on, uh, things happening with enjambant properties out there. Uh, or, or new construction that's happening out on Brewster Street. It's good to see new construction back in town. There's no other questions, I'll move on to the police report. Yes, ma'am. I don't know, they just cleared the lock, um, we don't know, I, I'm suspecting it'll probably be additional new construction by the other developer that's up there, but I do not know that. Potentially, I, I don't think it's a person.
They just, they just had to, they had to clean it up, 'cause they were
There was a bunch of concrete and stuff down there.
Yeah, so they had to clean it up, they just, they're not blaming them on doing it.
I'm a hundred percent sure, so I, I believe that, that it's probably the old version.
Is this the one here, is they're gonna build it?
Is it?
They would.
I was looking at something the other day. Well, you know, this doesn't actually say whether something's commercial or not, but it's part of the county's, I think it's commercial.
I'm gonna move on to PD, uh, Chief Conductor here tonight is off on vacation, he's out of town, he'll be back on Saturday. As you can see, there was a higher-than-hold call volume, eight hundred eighty-nine officer initiated incidents, a hundred sixty-one calls for service. And that will wrap up all of the department reports.
Head of Board Commissioner, any committees? So, finish bids, Senator Second Reading Amendment ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh five, please schedule building permits.
A motion we approve on second reading, mandatory links, twenty-three dash oh five.
Get second.
I'll see.
Motion made in second to, to the second reading amendment, uh, to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, please schedule building permits, questions? Comments? All in favor? All opposed?
That will go ahead, if you'd like, I'll go ahead and have that go into effect, please.
Uh, moving on to the second reading, and to adopt the Hessen product. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five, town package annual budget.
I, I read a very convincing letter from the police chief in regards to salaries. Have we, have you looked at that, and did you, have you got a copy of that letter too?
Yeah, I got it out of the email.
I'm kind of concerned that, that we're still falling behind in comparison to other police departments. My, my concern is that we're gonna start losing a lot more, and we're gonna be forced to hire the gypsy officers like we used to. Is there any way we can fix the budget for what we're losing?
It's funny you mention that, uh, because when his letter, email went out today, uh, I was trying to figure out ways in which it could maybe work out. Uh, when initially, we, one of the things that's come up, um, I got a phone call from, uh, Jill Lane, and, uh, from Inman, and, uh, Calzino, and they've just recently increased their base amount from forty thousand to forty-three thousand. Um, and so for us to be competitive, it would make sense for the town package to go up to forty-three thousand as well. But when we do that, then you also have to change everybody else, because it, it kind of, you don't wanna have a situation where you've got an employee who's already hired, that's making less than a new employee that's coming in.
Okay.
So we're looking at approximately about a seven point five percent increase, to go from the forty to the forty-three thousand on there. Um, and I went back and looked at the numbers on there, and then based off of our current losing employee on there, uh, I'd also created a lot of buffers throughout the whole budget on there. Uh, and I've got a way that if y'all would like, um, instead of a three percent quota, it would be a three percent quota and a four point five percent adjustment, so a total of seven point five percent increase across the board. And it would stay, and you would not change your budget. And I can show you the numbers if you'd like to see them.
You've already got enough buffer to cover all that.
What's that?
You've got the buffer.
I've got the buffer for that. That, that also still enables a ten percent for overtime. You'll see there the FY twenty-four, um, and then those who have knocked out their, uh, annual, uh, two percent increase based off of their stepping rate, uh, have been factored on there, um, taking out the change in the three percent quota to the three percent plus the four point five, uh, still having the two percent annual based on the stepping rate, the three percent for Christmas bonus, if council decides to do so. The total cost of there ends up being, uh, three forty-eight, uh, plus the overtime's three eighty-three, and you currently have about three hundred and maybe forty thousand dollars that's budgeted next year for your, uh, police salaries.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add, uh, PD salaries discussion.
You could amend it to, uh, amend it to add, uh, add on the consideration of approval of this, if you'd like.
I mean, we, we already, we already have a, an item on the agenda for this budget.
Yeah.
If we make changes now.
You're not changing the budget, the budget's
Why do we need a motion?
But the motion would be is to, to do the, basically the, the, the change in the percentage to the seven point five.
If the line item is into budget for that on there?
We don't need a motion.
So the thing is, is I have enough, I guess, fact, in the police salaries, so that you'd have to change anything. And everything stays exactly the way it is, I was able to move some numbers around to make it stay the same way that you currently have it. But it still would be the, uh, the
The, this, the, the budget shows three eighty-four for fiscal year, this shows three eighty-three.
Yeah.
So you just round
Yeah, we're not changing the budget.
Does that, does that include the officer that we're going to add?
Yes.
To still add a new officer, right?
So that's, uh, one, two, three, four, perhaps, that's six officers in chief.
We currently had five, right?
Currently have five.
Well, I see, I see a second video. So this still adds an officer?
Yes.
Okay. And it, it's still enough there for overtime?
Yes. We've looked at overtime, we don't use the much as I originally thought that we did, so ten percent should be enough to cover that. Plus, we also believe that, uh, in the first year, it will take a little while before we end up bringing out a new officer. Uh, so there'll be some time, and within that first month, there'll be a big cost savings as well. Another thing to keep in consideration, the, uh, three percent for the Christmas, the two percent for the annuals, um, are based on day one, then getting that, but they don't actually get it on day one. They get it based off of the Christmas time, so there's especially half that until they end up getting it, 'cause that comes much later. Uh, I'm sorry, the, the bonus will be the same, and the two percent, uh, would not go into effect until they actually reach their year.
Okay, what is the motion now, Charlie?
Uh, well, there's a question whether we need to, I, I believe we need to amend the agenda to add the item even to the
We, we need, we need a, we need a minute, uh
You don't think we do?
No.
You have, so you're not changing anything with the budget?
Yeah, the budget's not changing.
So we still have to
Just put this up next month again, the pay, pay scale changes. If the budget's gonna be fine, we can
Get a way to do, we'll go a pretty
We just need to approve it before we start paying the next budget.
I'd like to do it now, considering that email, like, I think we should
I mean, we can show a lot to the guys that are out there, that whether you do it now, it's not gonna go into effect until you're on first.
I, I agree. Well, let's
Go ahead.
We're off, all right.
What, what do you move?
Motion is to, uh, basically give our PD an additional four and a half percent of the quota.
What do you? We'll go with seven point five, was what you said.
Yeah, seven point five total.
So the motion is to amend tonight's agenda to include an item to reflect pay raises for the police department.
Sure.
Correctly. I second that motion.
Motion made in second. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
Now, we think we've approved the budget.
Correct. We need to approve, we need to approve this We need to approve this pay scale.
I'll make a motion. We approve this new pay scale.
Okay. I second. Motion made in second. Any further questions? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. All right. Now, get back to consider the second reading and adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, town package annual budget.
I make a motion. We approve on second reading through office of twenty twenty-five, town package.
Motion made in second.
I see.
Motion made in second to approve the second reading, adopt the second reading of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, town package annual budget. Any questions? Comments? All in favor? All opposed? Consider approving amendment, uh, administrative contract. Do you have that in your.
A motion we approve the amendment to administrative contracts.
Motion made to approve. Your second.
I second.
Motion made in second to approve the amendment to administrative contract. Any questions?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I, I don't necessarily see the need to have a contract anymore. As an employee in a town at this point, do we need a contract?
Yes.
What?
It gives all.
We've always had one. Even.
Between your period. When I had my last back.
Yeah, so even with Allen, we had one there.
Yeah.
For ten years.
I'm just saying, I just.
Yes.
I don't feel we need to have a contract.
Okay. Anybody else? We have a motion in the second. Any other comments? Are you ready to vote? All in favor? All opposed? New business. Consider establishing capital funds account.
If you like, I can read for all this. It's a lot, but the town has been very fruitful over the years. And has, um, amassed, amassed a very large chunk of money, um, throughout the years. And we've currently invested that in the local government, that's been cool, has been very successful with that. Um, but I wanted y'all to consider this as something to count as a retreat. It is earmarking a section to that money, restricting some sections of that money for specific future projects as they come up. Specifically for infrastructure or even some capital expenses, new lease dollars if we have to replace a trash truck, building replacements that are out there. Uh, so I wanted to go over with you, there's currently out there in terms of our accounts. Um, there's a total of six hundred thousand dollars which comes from the purchase of the claw frame as well as earmark from representative boss for the town hall improvements. Uh, and, um, that does not include, as of today, you currently have about fifteen thousand dollars in addition that has come in through interest payments, payments on that. Um, so the wallet's sitting there. It's still a prudent players for the town. Uh, ARPA funds, um, several years ago, the town received seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. And ARPA funds, this was the American Rescue Plan Act, came down from the federal government. Some towns received millions of dollars, some received much smaller amounts. Um, and so it, it initially, when the funds came out, it was limited on how you could actually spend those funds. Then later up, they came up with what's called the final rule. And the final rule allowed towns to be able to use the funds much more liberally than they were at the beginning of there. So as of right now, these are all stuff that y'all have approved, uh, except for the sewer expansion that's on there. I just put it in there as a line filler, at least for right now. Y'all can change that at some point if you'd like. Um, but all of these are projects that y'all have approved and what the remaining amounts are in the various sections that are on there. Um, so with that being said, that money gets earmarked off to the side, so it's not considered part of your general fund. From that that's left over, uh, I believe I have on there that, um, from that remaining on there that I suggested that you have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that states in the general fund. And that's for kind of rainy day, if something happens, a buffer between everything else that you have and your day-to-day operations. One thing that's intentional there, um, the town package currently, um, received a grant from the Department of Aging, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And a grant from the community development block grant of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, I have put those on there as liabilities for the town. Uh, because as of right now, the project is not complete as it's supposed to be done. Uh, we're currently with, working with a developer who happens to be in the room right now, uh, who's developing that building. Uh, if it gets developed the way it all should be, the way it all is designed, then the town will end up receiving, uh, about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of that. So, um, what that is, is there's, there's two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars from the community development block grant. Uh, one thing I was able to negotiate with the Department of Aging is if we do the project and have a room within the claw frame that's a community space where seniors can come once a month, um, the negotiated amount was four hours a month. Uh, and that's a partnership that would be done with the Sparkler County Parks Rant. Uh, but over the course of five years, if we do that, uh, after five years, we will have eliminated the, the grant or the need to pay it back. Uh, we'll still have to put back seventy-five percent, but that leaves you at twenty-five percent. So that's the, the amount of the three hundred and sixty-five thousand. I'm not sure if I explained that well. What, the, the, until we do that project, we may have to pay those funds back. Once the project's done, we will have to pay that money back and so that money becomes part of your general fund. And then at that point, you can allocate it however you'd like.
Motion to approve establishing capital funds account.
Motion made in second to establish a capital funds account. Any questions?
Are y'all okay with the breakdowns of the capital funds, the thirty percent for real estate, thirty-five percent for vehicles, thirty-five percent for new construction? That cannot change at any point in time. That just kind of gives me an idea of where things kind of go.
That's good. Any other questions? Comments? All in favor? All opposed? Consider approving an amendment to employer resolution for participation in the state insurance benefit program.
So as of right now, um, the, all towns across the state, South Carolina, council members are considered employees. Um, since they're considered employees, they are eligible for the, um, uh, the retirement, the reimbursement, eligible for the, our, our medical insurance. Uh, just like any other employee would be. Um, in the past, the town has not provided that. Um, what we found out is that, um, the PIBA has not recently hired somebody on to do an audit of a lot of towns and found that in addition to the town package, there were other towns that were not offering that. Another thing that triggered that was we have a couple of council members whose spouse also works for PIBA. And PIBA has a rule that states that if, if you're, if you're getting your PIBA insurance through your spouse, but you work for the town package, the town package needs to, uh, pay for your insurance, not your spouse. Uh, and so because of that, we have offered, um, we currently have three council members who currently have insurance. Uh, I've reached out to Shane Martin to see if that could be changed. A lot of small towns can't afford to provide insurance for all seven council members, uh, which would include their families as well. I did check on that. Um, and they, Shane reached out to PIBA and talked to them and convinced them to do a one, one-time opt-out, but it has to be done by July first of twenty twenty-four. It would permanently remove the town package council members as employees under PIBA. And the way it's set up is you would never be able to opt back in down the road. Now, that's what's being said. I don't know if we'll be able to opt back in later on. At this point, it's a cost. It's a big cost for the town package. Uh, it's a perk for y'all as council members. It would be a perk for other council members who may be interested in coming in. It is, it, it's, it's up to you. I just want to give you those, give it as an item in the schedule. Now that you've kind of heard more about this, if you'd like, we can table this because you do have until the twenty-seventh to pass this. If you don't pass this, um, you will stay on the current plan. Uh, and we do have, we are required at that point to offer all of y'all help insurance if you'd like.
My concern is if, does this become a conflict for us to vote on something that's basically our compensation package? For the three members that are using it, that's tricky to even vote on.
It, I.
And even, even the ones that aren't to vote on.
I would make a change from, it was my wife that had it in the issue state for the law, and I, I had to change mine last year. And so.
I wasn't gonna call you out.
I was under the assumption for the past seven years that because we weren't full-time employees, we didn't make enough money, that there was an option of insurance.
That's what we always thought until they, they.
Until, until the end.
Yeah.
No, I didn't. No, I play from my home, but I'm here.
We, people suspect that sometime a long time ago, a council member made some big deal about it. And now all council members across the state of South Carolina are considered full-time employees. That relates to PIBA.
I don't know how it works. All I know is I was on my husband's insurance and then we got a letter and said that the town had to pay for that. I couldn't be on this insurance. So as long as I'm covered, I don't care what happened. I don't know what it was about.
The only thing about this is I would say in five years from now, you know, as the town just grows, you know, I can see that as a perk that you want to have for a council member moving forward. Um, but if you'd like, I can try to put together some, uh, cost estimates of what it could potentially cost for everybody to be on there.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Are you asking us to kick, kick off the people that are taking it or do we, do the other people have to take it? Like, so, so.
No, no, you don't have to take it. What I'm asking is the, the town package opt out of this employee required, um, stipulation. So that the town package will not have to offer, uh, council members, uh, insurance. And then the two council members or the, or the three council members would have to get either their insurance back on their spouse or, or have to do insurance.
What, you don't know? What is the cost?
What's that?
What is, we don't have numbers on what it's actually costing the town.
I can show you the costs that are on there and it's all based off of, it's, it's more once you start adding spouse and, and family that are on there. Um, the base rate for the, what the employer pays. Um, currently, the way that we have it set up is any full-time employee in the town package, uh, if they're a single employee, we pay a hundred percent of their costs.
So that I still don't understand is there one percent paid insurance?
So, but with council members, you're not full-time employees in our definition. And so you still have to pay for your portion of that is there. But.
What do you mean? So the town isn't paying a little percent of the insurance?
For council members.
Okay.
Everybody else, the town is.
Okay, so I think it's only fair if the, if the council member's paying for their insurance.
They're not paying for the insurance.
The town's paying for the council member's insurance?
The town is, the town is paying for the employer side of insurance.
Okay.
So if you look on the PIBA scale, and I can send you a copy of it, uh, there is a, an employer cost and there is an employee cost that's on there. And it goes up based off of you've got spouse, if you've got children, that you have other things that are on there, if you've got, uh, dental and vision and various things.
So right now, if our, our video file will be one hundred percent paid.
No. So if you.
Okay, so this is where I'm confused because you're, I'm understanding that their insurance, all of their insurance is being paid one hundred percent.
So the town's definition of a full-time employee is a forty-hour a week employee.
Right, I got that.
So our employees, our eleven employees, the town pays for, um, a hundred percent. Uh, so if you are a single person, so, um.
So, okay. Does April and Dan and whoever else, do they pay for their insurance?
They pay for their, they pay for their, uh, employee side of that.
Okay, so it's a portion, a percentage.
They still, they pay a, a portion of it.
Oh, just like if you had a regular job, my employer pays a percentage and then I pay another percentage.
Correct.
That's how it is.
Now, employees of the town who are forty hours, we cover that amount.
I got that, okay. All right. I, I was understanding as being paid one hundred.
Can we get some real numbers to see what, how much of hardship it actually is for the town?
I think if y'all want to take, if y'all want to table this, I'll send you a copy of the, of the, of the breakdown.
I'll be honest with you. I think it's, I think it's fair just to, you know, you want to opt out, you want to opt out. Review it again next month. I don't see a problem with, I wish they would have done it seven years ago.
Well, in seven years, we, we, I guess, I don't think they were enforcing it seven years ago.
No, they weren't enforcing it. They, they, they did a complete statewide audit and found these people. So how long, how long would you spend knowing this?
Couple of years ago.
We just found out, I think, last year that we were trying to do this.
It's going on, please. So this is two years that we had known this?
The state would do that.
That y'all know, but the council hadn't.
So, no, what had happened, as soon as we found out, we went ahead and covered the people that we were required to cover. And then Tony hasn't been talking to council members and saying, if you would like to opt in, you can. And when that happened, I reached out to Shane Martin. I said, hey, you know, this is gonna be a big burden for the town package. Is there any way that we can get out of this? And Shane said he's got the same issue with his wife. She has another job, the same kind of thing. It only works if you've got a husband, wife, and both of them are on PIBA, um, one PIBA's can't pay the other PIBA. That really doesn't help. Uh, and so with, as soon as we, so I reached out to Shane. He came back and he talked to PIBA. And he is giving it once in a lifetime, one-time opt-out for small towns, practically any towns, uh, to be able to do this, but this haven't done it up until our first.
Are you saying, are you saying, do you think we can afford it or not? Afford to, to do it like that or not?
If you tell me to afford it, I can.
I think you need, I think the budget needs to reflect all seven council members having insurance regardless. I think it needs to reflect that. And if it doesn't, the money goes into whatever. But I think the possibility of it, the budget needs to reflect that regardless. You never know. Council members change all the time. So if we're going to do it, we need to reflect that in the budget. If we're not going to do it.
It'd be nice if we had that.
Let me, if y'all like, if, if you want to wait until next, until the second, I have to bring it all in numbers.
I think everybody agrees that that would be wise. Go ahead and put the numbers together so we're looking at the numbers. I like the motion to table them.
Okay.
I'll say.
Look, basically, second table. Any questions? Any comments? All in favor? All opposed? Okay? Consider first reading of ordinance, uh, annexed into the town with package, uh, South Carolina, a property located in, um, one forty-six.
They would like to be part of the town package. They have asked to be a part of the town so they can have police protection.
A motion that we approve on first reading.
Allen Drive is off of Grace Lane, so you can have it for it and then merge onto, uh, Allen and Allen Village, which is Grace Lane. But it's a, it's a new home that's just been built.
You know, you know where you're going to the, uh, uh, just thank the church of God.
Thank you, thank the church of God. They know that if they get police coverage, they get code enforcement too, right on.
So there we go.
Is there a physical address?
It's brand new. We actually, I remember going out there and watching them put in the footage. It's got a brick foundation there, but it's, it's a new home that's just been put out there.
Is there a physical address?
It's one forty-six Allen. It's one forty-six Allen Drive. Okay. Our motion to approve.
Motion made to approve, second. Second, you may.
I'll say.
Motion made and second to approve, any questions, any comments, on the favor, on the opposed? Discussion, consider selling one forty-one Coleman Circle, that's the old, what we use as a storage building, it's the old rescue one building.
The building is now, it's part of a tract that has the Coleman, I'm sorry, that has the T W Edwards that's part of. We have someone who's interested in buying that property that's there. The property will be surveyed off to make it into separate parcels, so that we aren't selling the T W Edwards that are along with it. Along, the other thing is, we've recently had a appraisal of the property, it's for forty thousand dollars. I believe the mayor has somebody who's interested in purchasing it for less than that. Because of its less than the appraisal, it'll have to go out for bids, or you could have it go out to a real estate agent. At that point, the public will be able to option to, to put in offers on the property itself.
Just because it's a lower bid?
Yes, if, if, if they put in an offer less than what the property is appraised at, we can't just sell it to them. At that point, it looks like we knew it was worth a lot more, and we kind of had somebody else on the side go ahead and sell it to them.
So what are you asking, that we just approve?
So what I'm asking, so what I'm asking is, if y'all, if y'all would like me to go ahead and have this property surveyed, and if you'd like for it to be, go out to bid, or if you'd like for it to have a higher realtor come in and sell it for the town.
So even though it's appraised for that, we can't sell it for, we want to sell it, we have to sell it for once it's appraised?
No, no, if, if, the, the, the property's appraised forty thousand dollars, so if anybody comes into town and all this, I'll give forty thousand dollars to it, I can sell it to them tomorrow. But because of the fact that they are offering a number less than what the appraised value is, then you've got to make sure that you are giving everybody the opportunity to put in a number less than the appraised value of that.
Are we allowed to put it over the market for sale?
Are we putting it over the market for sale? Yes, but y'all will still have to have two readings to actually sell it.
Right.
We don't have to use a realtor, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I'm wondering, is it, could we just, we don't have a sale and?
Essentially the bid process, right?
Yes, because I called M A C about this to make sure that we were doing this correctly, and said, if you sell it for the appraised amount, you do not, you do not have to go through the public.
Right.
But since you're going under the appraised value, it has to be done to give the whole public the opportunity to buy it.
Yeah, my, my concern with the bid process is, I don't, you know, we sold this building down here for like ten thousand five hundred.
We can do a bid process, which is we just put something out on our website that says we need to have all bids at a certain date, and they all come in, and we advertise that to the public, and put it on our website and procurement site. And when they all come in, y'all take the highest bid before.
So you have to take the highest bid?
But you can take the lowest, but you have to have a really good reason why you did not take the, another bid out there.
I think I'd take the highest.
I think putting out a bid is smart, a realtor is not going to want this project, because it's more work than it's worth for them. But if we can advertise it maybe a little better than what we did with this building, and we can always start a bid higher.
So what we need to do is just do.
Are you talking about doing an auction, Charlie, or does everyone put, put, submit their, like, both bids?
Like, like a, like a silent auction?
What we've done with others, like.
You don't say bid, would it?
You go around, kind of what you did with some vehicles, is that everyone puts in a bid by a certain date.
Why, why, let me ask you, why can't we just turn it over to a real estate person, tell them this is what we want, and sell it like that, can we do that?
Yes.
That's fine.
That's what I said ten minutes ago.
That's fine, I just don't know if a realtor would really want to do it.
I would, I would do it that way, we, you would have.
They put a price on there.
They're going to give, they're going to win the right.
Once the price, once they have an offer that comes in, it comes before y'all to approve that offer or not, once you approve that, then you start closing. During that closing time, you would need to do your two readings to sell the property.
Would that matter then, so would the appraisal amount matter then, if it was turned over to a real estate agent?
At that point, it's, it's open to the public to put whatever they want.
And their appraisal, whatever it was, done for it.
How much is the survey, do you have any ideas?
I don't know.
Couple thousand, maybe?
Yeah, I've seen a couple thousand, usually what a survey costs.
You're just, you're, this is the building that. Blue building where.
The one that the tree fell on.
Yeah.
Was it a fire?
EMA is.
We will, we will certainly to get the, the building cleaned out, and then we also have the mayor's purple sign on it. If y'all know there's a purple sign that's in there.
Beautiful, beautiful.
So, a realtor, we need to make a motion, or you can either give it to a realtor, try to find a realtor that wants that.
If y'all are okay with, if y'all are okay with going in and doing that, I'll, we can do professional services for the survey. We can go in and find somebody that we've worked with in the past, if y'all have any recommendations, but it should be about two thousand dollars, I'd say, not to exceed four thousand dollars for the survey. Anything more than that, we'd have to come back to y'all anyway for approval.
I mean, it's going to have to go to, to your deeds and everything else, and there's fees to be paid now, it's, I mean, it's going to be at least two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars, maybe three. Just to separate it out, which you got to consider that that's, that's part of the, the cost of selling the building, so we're looking at right now, probably thirty-seven thousand for the building, after making three grand for surveying.
So if y'all are okay, if someone there's going to make a motion to, to go ahead and do a survey on there, and list it with the realtor, and we'll do a conscious policy, smart policy, and search association, and have them recommend somebody, so I'm not selected out.
Motion that we have it resurveyed and.
Motion made to have it surveyed and turn it over to a real estate.
I say.
On the favor? On the opposed?
Call, call Muggs Spartanburg, see what they thought of this or something.
We've got someone over here now who wants to take it.
Discussion, so we can mention, and Wes mentioned.
So y'all had asked to reach out to the attorney on our breaking their contract with Summit, and I did reach out to Gary, we were able to talk about this, and he advised that after the town had gone through the process of an RFP and selected a company that, working with a new company, could result in a lawsuit. If we end up trying to break that and do it with somebody else, but he recommends that they've got three years, just let that play out and move forward with that.
Okay. Discussion, the tour notes.
Do you want me to start or you want to start?
You can. I, the only reason I asked you to put it on there is, Mitt, Mitt asked me to review that, because the language in there, when we passed that ordinance a while back, the language, our assumption was that, that we would be packet businesses first, in our, in our thinking, our police department would use packet businesses first, to keep that in run on, support local. If I'm not mistaken, the mayor had had a conversation with the chief and Mr. Mitt, to make sure that that was in fact what was going to happen, all right? Our current chief said that he's struggling with communication and such, and the language in the ordinance basically says he can do whatever he wants. List A and list B means nothing, that's fluff of the ordinance, they don't have to pick and choose or do anything of that sort, he can basically put whoever wants on there. I just want everybody, all the council members to know that there is no, there is no requirement in that ordinance to support local businesses first. That's not what we intended by passing that ordinance. I personally feel like we should always promote packet businesses first. And if, if they are struggling to communicate, struggling to perform, then I think that that's why we have list A and list B. So I don't know if anybody wants to amend some of the language in there or not. I think, I think it's, you know, the chief would, would, hopefully he would understand that it is support local first, deal with that, but. The reason, the reason the ordinance was changed in the beginning was because the previous ordinance would not allow the packet police department to seek a regular service outside of town's limits. So anytime the regular service, if, if, Jane Doe's car was towed, and it was towed by a business outside of the packet itself, then their, their court case potentially could be let go. Because the police department used a regular service that was not according to our ordinances. I, it, it's, it was a poor value in the language, and we just corrected it really quick, something that they could use, I think at the time it was Campbell's.
Well, it's, it's set up so that if, if you choose who you want, the town has, has no say in that.
Correct.
It's only when you don't choose, it may be because you're incapacitated, it may be for a number of reasons, for council, sorry, council, if PD goes after a property and there's a car parked where it's not supposed to, and they have to tow that, then they go based off of this list. And the list was designed in such a way so that they weren't always picking one or two, or picking one, there's a rotation of that.
Right. Has chief given you his opinion on this?
The chief would like to go with what Spartanburg County currently does. After talking to Mr. Mitt, there is what's called districts in Spartanburg County, and in Spartanburg County, if, and the district is kind of based off of eighty-five south, and I couldn't understand what he was talking about on the, on the west side of there, but the way it's set up is that if you're outside any of the municipalities out there, outside of town packet, the dispatch would call the next one that's on the list that's in that district. And so instead of the town having to maintain the, the list, and you would think, what's the problem maintaining the list? There's a lot of stuff that's involved with maintaining the list. We have to keep up to date with every single person who will be coming out on that record at any given time. We have to go out and check the location and verify the locations in a location zone in that particular area. We have to verify that the only business that is located at that particular location is that towing service. But you can see in the ordinance, there's a lot of things that the chief has to go out there and do to allow somebody to be added onto that list. This makes it so much easier, his recommendation is to kind of throw that whole thing out and just build with the Spartanburg County's list. Keep in mind, the chief does not call anybody, the officers don't call anybody. They tell dispatch who to contact when they're out in the city. They say, based on our list, that you need to call this person, or you need to call this person. If they went the way with the county, dispatch already has all that information, and they just say, call that person on the list. That's what the chief is recommending. Only because he's had some issues where the current person that's on the list or now, doesn't always show up in a lot of time, based on the ordinance, it says they have to be there within thirty minutes. And there are some times where they don't pick up the phone, and that could be because they're out of service. And there were a time where the individual, according to the chief, the individual just refused to come.
So what's the allotted time for Spartanburg County?
Mayor?
What's their allotted time?
I don't know what the allotted time on there, but I can check that and see. But I would make sure, I mean, what you can end up doing is setting it up so that you use Spartanburg County, so they have to arrive at a certain time on there. I'm not saying that you're going to pass anything tonight, it's just a discussion on this, and I can look into more of what Spartanburg County currently does. But I will say, Mr. Mitt did want to be, what he is looking for is that if anything happens, that he's the first person that's chosen. Because he has a lot here, it's located right here in town, he does pay property taxes here in town, he has a business license here in town, which is also requiring for any other person to do that. And, and it's not like it's a monopoly, I mean, it is, but the other thing is, is the ordinance states what, what he's charged. He doesn't, he can't, doesn't get any charge of ten thousand dollars. And the ordinance states how much you're charged at different times of day.
I'm torn, I really want to promote business first, but I want to make our PDs life easier. I don't know how to accomplish that.
It may be worthwhile that at the twenty-seventh meeting, if Chief Hall is here, and let him do a quick presentation of what his experience of doing it is.
Let's go to me. Okay. We'll put it on agenda the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Come in. Come in, Mr.? Okay. Thank y'all for coming out, I'd like for y'all to remember all the things that are going on here in the town. We have movie night this weekend, had a pretty good turnout last time, and I think we'll have a good turnout this time. We need to promote all the things that are happening here in the town, so we can get out on toast, do anything like that. Yeah, it's working, there's a lot of other things that I'll need to promote all of that.
Would y'all like Lyles to leave those samples here, so that y'all can check these out?
Yes.
I would, I would like Lyles to leave whatever other samples, maybe have those here for council persons, like come by and just take a look. I can come by with some more samples.
I'll make a motion over there. On the favor? On the opposed?